So much going on in the Watchtower world. Let's just have a look for a minute. Um, been very busy watching all these videos, but you have the John Cedars on the annual 2019 annual meeting and then um ugly Watchtower has been reporting on this massive complex that's being built in the country of um in in the countryside of England somewhere. And then you've got all this breaking news from Kim and Mikey and from the ex-JW analyzer. Um, gosh, I tell you, there's some stuff going on. I don't know how the, I don't know how they're gonna get out of this. I don't know how you, how they're gonna. Um, gee, they're clever the way they keep going, the Watchtower. Gosh, but anyway, let's go on with our theological audit on the 2020 special meeting with pioneers.
... what Jehovah can do to provide for us. But what we know now is that we can feel safe in Jehovah's hands. We know that he's going to take care of us. We know that Jehovah blesses those who are trusting in him. And so, yes, they're friends, they're pioneers. At times, we're going to feel like soon David.
Now, just for those that were wondering what was going on there. I watch things at double speed because I've got a lot of things to get through, but I brought it back.
... to face challenges that will cause us distress and anguish that will make our eyes weak, our whole body as well. But may we echo for an eternity the words that David wrote at verse 14 when he says, "But I trust in you, O Jehovah." You are my God. Brother DeW.
These guys are no different to Old Testament um people, are they? I don't know what their go is. They don't seem to be living in the New Testament. Oh, gosh.
Juan Rayner from the Central Poughkeepsie Congregation will now consider the next part of this symposium, "Maintaining Your Trust in Jehovah When Facing Various Challenges."
Maintaining your trust in Jehovah. Here we go. Here we go, viewers.
Well, pioneers, we've heard that word before, various. Uh, we know it basically means in the scriptures that something that's multicolored. But it's synonymous with several other words such as several, copious, abundant, profuse, countless, innumerable. Isn't it true of the various trials that we've seen Jehovah servants, faithful servants face in the past, that they really have for some of them seemed uh innumerable? In fact, imagine yourself in this situation. You're young, you've just lost your beloved marriage mate in death. You suffer from-
Oh, what a great, oh, this is awesome, isn't it? Wonderful um illustration. You're young, you've just lost your marriage mate in death. Oh, come on. Wow.
From extreme poverty. And now, while-
And you're suffering from extreme poverty. Oh, God, oh, hang on.
Various. Uh, we know it basically means in the scriptures that something that's a multicolored. But it's synonymous with several other words such as several, copious, abundant, profuse, countless, innumerable. Isn't it true of the various trials that we've seen Jehovah servants, faithful servants face in the past, that they really have for some of them seemed uh innumerable?
Well, you might want to um, let's just have a look for a minute. I do ask you to stay with me. Um, every night I get an email from Google on the latest on the Jehovah Witnesses. Now, is he talking about um the fact that Russia's added 200 Jehovah Witnesses to the extremism terrorist list? Russia blacklist over 200 Jehovah Witnesses. Um, and there, this is big news. Jehovah Witnesses Drug and Alcohol Rehab. Um, Ex-Jehovah Witnesses Recount Sexual Abuse in the, this documentary that's coming up in America. Organization denies tried to covering, covering it up. This is that um thing that everyone's talking about. Your County Woman's Story Featured on Oxygen TV Show, The Witnesses. Survivors of Alleged Sexual Abuse Inside Jehovah Witnesses Hope For Justice And Change. Is this what he's talking about, this bloke? Um, Another 200 Jehovah Witnesses Marked As Terrorists And Extremists, Which I Think They Should Be. The Witnesses Premier Saturday And Sunday. Oh dear, honestly. Oh my gosh. Ah, dear, oh dear.
In fact, imagine yourself in this situation. You're young, you've just lost your beloved marriage mate in death. You suffer from extreme poverty.
You're young. This is, he's talking to pioneers, so. Oh, gosh. You're young, you've just lost your marriage made in death, and you're suffering from extreme poverty. Now, he's talking to people that apparently have Jehovah looking after them. Can you see how religious fanaticism turns? Um, the normalities of everyday life and the tragedies and the, the blessings and the good and bad of everyday life. It tries to inject Jehovah into everything or Satan into everything in a black and white way. There's no life just working itself out with religious extremism. Now, can you imagine suffering the loss of somebody that you love? Um, what about JW suicide? A lot of these people commit suicide. There's a, there's a suicide doctrine, isn't there, in the Jehovah Witnesses? Um, a get off, a get off Scott card, you get off um Scott free. Uh, what's that doctrine? One, somebody there would know. Um, Ex-JW Suicide Due To Shunning. Jehovah Witnesses, What Happens After Death? Suicide, Why Did Jehovah Witnesses Have A Rate Far Exceeding That Of The General Public? Jehovah Witnesses And Suicidal Thoughts. JW Suicide, We Lost Debbie. Excuse me, but I can't pronounce, Degenhart. Suicide Call To The Kingdom Hall. Elder's Hateful Cold Response. Um, there's a suicide doctrine in the Jehovah Witnesses and apparently um if you commit suicide, uh, you get a second chance or some nonsense, some theologically abusive um doctrine or uh, what suicide? Uh, hang on. Can we find something on this? Suicide Is Apostasy? Um, do not, Suicide Prevention. Suicide Doctrine, watch, I'm gonna put in Watchtower. I know many of you will be trying to say, "This is what it is, this is what it is," but I just don't, I don't know. JW Suicide's Channel's A Very Good Channel. Um. Shunning seems to have a lot to do with the suicide. Okay, let's go, Watchtower. Watchtower. Second Chance Theology. Um, what is second chance theology? Um, second chance in life? Respond, Jehovah Witnesses Claim At The Resurrection Some Will Get A Second Chance To Be Saved. This Is Not The Truth Of God. Okay. Why You Should Question The Authority Of The Watchtower? Yeah, okay. So there is a doctrine in there about second chance and, oh, no.
And now, while all of this is going on, you become responsible for the care of your aged and also poverty-stricken uh in-law. You probably know who we're talking about. See, it was that of Ruth. Now, who did Ruth put her trust in as she faced these various challenges?
I just wanna say, um, this is, this is real extremism cult language because these people already have their faith in Jehovah. There's nothing more they can do or not do to prove that their faith is in Jehovah. The tragedies of life, the horrible, and, and I do take a moment for those of you that are listening that might have experienced something as traumatic and horrible as the loss of a loved one or several loved ones. But trying to mix your or weigh your faith against losses in life as a means of saying your faith isn't strong enough or something of this nature and this is why things are happening to you. You have to do more. That is probably the most cruellest form of theological abuse that there is.
Well, the Bible Book of Ruth, chapter 2, verse 12, it tells us that Ruth sought refuge under Jehovah God's wings. Now, was her trust misplaced? Did Ruth receive the blessing for maintaining her trust in Jehovah through these challenges?
See, for some strange reason, there's this idea that you can gain God's blessing by what you do or don't do, and that's not true. The blessings that we have as Christians are given to us through our faith in Christ. And while we have the blessing in us, working through us and all the rest of it, that doesn't take away the fragility of life, both on the good side and the bad side. Life is a very, very fragile journey. We have a body that has things happen to it. We have circumstances that happen to us. But where does Jehovah fit into all this? Well, by faith, by faith in Christ. To try and go beyond that, to try and show Jehovah or whoever is the measure of your faith by the things that you do or don't do, you've got it all wrong. It's by faith you have been saved, by grace, and that not of yourselves, it is the gift of God. There's nothing you can do to get the blessing out of this blessing. What a lie, this blessing out of Jehovah instead of the fact that you already have it in Christ. See, this is religious manipulative motivational talk. This is how they anchor you in.
Well, we see in the scriptures the outcome that Jehovah gave to Ruth. Not only was she physically cared for in a spectacular way, but Jehovah took her place as spiritually she never could have gotten on her own. She became an incestuous to the Christ. And when Ruth is resurrected, she's gonna find out from millions of individuals how her example of trust and faith in Jehovah benefited them at this most crucial time of the end. See, what a wonderful blessing for maintaining trust in Jehovah.
Now, what he's saying is, don't lose faith due to the opposition that you're experiencing as a cult follower. If you're experiencing opposition as a result of being in this cult and trying to share the deception and propaganda of the cult, be like Ruth, don't lose faith. No mention, viewers, of the Lord Jesus Christ. Not one mention that we're saved by faith and have all the blessings that God have to offer us in the finished work of the Lord Jesus Christ. Not one mention.
Now, for us today as pioneers, isn't it true that at times we face numerous of various multicolored challenges in our lives? In fact, notice what the study edition of the 2018 Watchtower, page 8, paragraph 4. It was also used as a daily text for us. You can reference that Monday, September 9. But notice what it had to say about the challenges that we face. It says, "Many of you dear brothers and sisters are coping with serious illness. Others are well along in years themselves. They're caring for elderly relatives. Still, others are struggling to provide not luxury items, but the basic necessities for their families. And we know that many are dealing with not one, but several of these problems all at once." Now, does that describe your situation as a pioneer? Well, who can we put our trust in? Who can we put faith in? Of course, the same, like Ruth, we can put faith and trust in Jehovah God.
I just wanna say again, these people have already done that. This is something that they've already done. Look at, just by the way, look at this bloke, Paul Brunt. "I recommend that all true brothers and sisters who listen to a YouTube site that is by someone posting as an apostate may want to try JW public talks instead. It is very well done for personal study and for meetings and a lot of public talks from A to Z." I just reckon he needs to get a life. But these people already have that he's talking to. They already have faith in Jehovah. It's not something that they need to find, they already have it.
In fact, notice what the scriptures admonish us to do in Psalms, the 34th Psalm and the 15th verse. It's the 34th Psalm and the 15th verse. It tells us, "The eyes of Jehovah are on the righteous, and his ears listen to their cry for help." Now, what a beautiful word picture this paints of our loving God, Jehovah. See, a father or mother whose children, they, they shriek in pain. We can see that they're in some type of undesirable situation. Our eyes, our ears, we're in tune with that. And at that moment, see, nothing else matters but helping that child. See, that's our, our God Jehovah. He wants nothing to, he wants to help us in that moment when we cry out to him. Children, they, they shriek in pain. We can see that they're in some type of undesirable situation. Our eyes, our ears, we're in tune with that. And at that moment, see, nothing else matters but helping that child.
I don't believe that to be true, given the, the child sexual abuse scandals within the Jehovah Witnesses. It just goes on and on and on and on. What the Jehovah Witnesses study article on child abuse is not telling you. There's a 45-minute talk on that. The Australian Royal Commission and how terribly wrong that went for the Jehovah Witnesses and how they said they joined the redress scheme and nobody's seen, seen them since. Um, live on Five, Jehovah Witnesses Church. Here, let's just have a quick look at this.
... of sexual abuse and the Jehovah's Witnesses organization have moved closer to home. Deborah Lee spoke with a woman today who claims she was abused as a child growing up in Lorraine. She's live in our newsroom with her story.
Well, now 26 years old Elizabeth McFarland has filed a suit against the West congregation out in Lorraine, and her attorney says that her case is one of about 10 that he's handling nationwide alleging sexual misconduct at Kingdom Hall.
Elizabeth McFarland remembers smiling on the outside when she took this picture, but inside there was pain.
I felt wrong and I felt dirty.
Elizabeth says she was sexually abused as a child by a now-deceased leader of the West congregation of Jehovah's Witnesses in Lorraine. And according to a lawsuit her attorney filed this morning, when she told the elders about the abuse, they did nothing.
Jehovah's Witnesses believe in what is called the biblical two-witness rule. According to the biblical two-witness rule, as they interpret it, unless the perpetrator confesses or alternatively, there are two eyewitnesses to the abuse, they can do nothing about it.
It literally ate me alive.
Elder Willie Walker says the West congregation has no comment at this time. However, Jehovah's Witnesses lawyer Jim McCabe admitted to our Scripps Sister Station in San Diego that the church does not always report allegations of abuse to police because of the two-witness rule.
Our problem is that there are some bad men that sneak into an organization. They've snuck into our organization, they've snuck into other organizations. When we discover who they are and what they are, we take the action that we can take as a religious organization.
In my own way, I'm at peace with what happened. My heart is not in turmoil anymore.
Now, Elizabeth's attorney tells us there's actually a database that contains, he says, thousands and thousands of names of people who have, who have filed complaints. Now, Elizabeth's alleged abuser committed suicide on her 16th birthday. Live on Five in the newsroom, I'm Deborah Lee.
Now, let's have a look at this database, see if we can get any info on it. The secret database, Jehovah Witnesses Alleged Have Se- dot, let's have a look.
UK News website mail online. Jehovah's Witnesses kept a secret database of tens of thousands of child molesters for two decades and hid it from the authorities.
There you go, it's in black and white. It's not, this isn't unknown to people outside the Jehovah Witnesses.
... Watchtower Bible and Tract Society, which serves as the head of Jehovah's Witness Organization accused of covering up molestation. Watchtower has paid millions of dollars in fines and settlements rather than open its files. The Watchtower in 1997 sent a survey to its 10,883 US Kingdom Halls seeking information about members of the community accused of sexual abuse. Court records show a lawyer for the church said 775 surveys were mailed back between 1997 and 2001. According to estimates, number of accused Jehovah's Witness child molesters listed in the secret database could range from 18,000 to 23,000. I will leave a link for the news article. Thank you.
For decades, Australian victims of child sex abuse were shunned and silenced.
I, I just can't believe that it's gone on for so long. So, I was 42 last week, so I was abused when I was 12 onwards, so it's 30 years.
But on Monday, the Prime Minister Scott Morrison will make a national apology long demanded by those sexually abused as children in institutional care.
So the Prime Minister has even apologized, but the Watchtower won't. Um, there's so much of it. Belgium. The child, JW child abuse data cover-ups, detailed article, there's a detailed article. Just put in JW sexual abuse database in YouTube and you will find out everything you wanna know about this thing. Um, this guy's a terrific communicator, ex-JW analyzer. And John Cedars, of course, he's just a tremendous communicator and educator as well. And it goes on and on and on and on. Jehovah Witnesses And Child Sexual Abuse. Why is the two-witness rule a red herring? By um, William Pickett, Eric Wilson. He's a tremendous communicator and educator as well. So, I'm not sure this guy's sort of put his foot in it, hasn't he? In a way, because the big picture of the Watchtower is they hide. Now, here, this is the Australian Royal Commission, I'm gonna play this, where this horrible elder uh tries to be rude to the commission and gets in somewhat a bit of trouble.
So if you're not satisfied that this person will not offend again, then you won't reprove. You'll disfellowship.
Yes.
And when the person's disfellowshipped, they then can still attend meetings and so on, but um under some restriction, is that right?
Under a lot of restrictions, yes.
And members of the congregation cannot associate with them socially.
Socially or spiritually?
Yes. But the person is still otherwise in the world and can associate with people outside of the church?
Yes.
And you don't take into consideration, do you, how people outside of the church might be kept safe from such a person whom you're not satisfied will not reoffend?
If they were outside the church and they were a close friend, I would tell them.
Well, and how would you know if they're a close friend and they're outside of the church?
If they're a close friend of mine.
A close friend of yours?
If I was, yes, if I associated with them.
What about people who are not close friends of yours, others than outside of the church? You don't take any steps, do you, to protect them from this potential reoffending? You don't, do you? You're concerned with the congregation principally, aren't you?
We're concerned with the congregations. We are shepherd of the congregation.
Yes, and you're not a shepherd to those who are not in the congregation?
No.
And as an organization in your experience, you don't seek to protect or take care of children who are outside of the congregation?
That's a broad statement. Um.
Well, I can limit it.
Yeah, limit it, please.
In your decision on whether or not to disfellowship someone, you don't take consideration of children outside of the congregation?
Do take consideration of them, but um, what ability have we got to protect every child in Australia?
Well, what you can do is you can report to uh the child protection authorities.
And that is done in some cases.
But generally, it's not done, is it?
No.
It's not done unless there's a legal requirement for it to be done, is there?
That is true.
Gee whiz. Oh, gosh, what a horrible organization. Oh, dear.
See, that's our, our God Jehovah. He wants nothing to, he wants to help us in that moment when we cry out to him. See, that trust is not misplaced. And how does Jehovah do that today for us? Well, in some cases, Jehovah may maneuver events so that it removes that trial completely away from us. But at other times, Jehovah may not choose to remove that trial. It may serve his will, his purpose, and glorify his name for us to endure that trial.
Oh, so see, see, what they're doing is, say you're in a, look, this is a, this is a scenario, okay? Just say, "I'm in a head-on accident. God, help me." What he's saying is, Jehovah may have maneuvered that to happen. The crisscrossing between what Satan does and what Jehovah does, this is where life, the freedom of us to make choices and experience life, be it good or bad, is removed by this two-world spiritual world intervening in the human world to make things happen to humans that wouldn't happen otherwise. Yes, I believe there's the miraculous side of, of the whole thing, but I wouldn't for one minute save it. And God help me, that if somebody's hurt like a small child or something like that, Jehovah had his hand in it. Just yesterday here, one of the neighbors was screaming at a child. I've rang the police on him before. I've rang the police and they've gone there and warned him. "If you speak to this baby like that, abusing it like that, we'll take you away." Well, he bugged it on again yesterday and stormed off in the car. I was just about to ring the police. My daughter's a police officer. Jehovah isn't gonna be there for every um hundreds and thousands of life. The over-spiritualization of the spiritual realm working in the natural realm of our lives is so far taken beyond what it should be. The manipulation and the domination and the witchcraft in that kind of mentality has misled millions for millennia, and it hasn't changed today. Look, listen to, this guy looks all polished and, and you know, all theological on the surface. But he's dangerous and deceived.
Even though we endure it, Jehovah gives us the strength to continue on. So either way, we receive the help that we really need.
No. Not in all cases. Some people, many people give up. Many people can't take the strains and stresses of what um religious abuse, theological abuse does.
Right, hello, YouTube. I'm doing another video because uh there's something I wanna talk about, so I'm on my way into work, but it's urgent! So, um, today I, or this morning, I was on Facebook. Um, I'm part of a really, really brilliant Jehovah's Witness um support group called um uh Ex-Jehovah's Witnesses Recovery 3, something like that, anyway, I'll post it in a little bit. Um, so someone put um a comment on there about, um, you know, "Does anyone else have suicidal thoughts?" And um, this got me thinking. So essentially, Jehovah's Witnesses are a registered charity, okay? Um, if you imagine a charity, you think it would be charitable towards people and the like. Anyway, so why are people leaving the Jehovah's Witnesses feeling suicidal? How is that a charity? How can they name themselves a charity?
Because that's where theological abuse leaves a person. When a person's under theological abuse and realizes that they've been lied to and deceived, the depression and the suicidal thoughts uh that follow are instinctive. You've demoralized yourself. You've embarrassed yourself beyond comprehension. And you've been lied to about one of the most important things in your life, and that is your God, your Creator.
Sorry, I've got concentration. Go, go, go. So, um, so, um, yeah, um, I, I want the Jehovah's Witnesses, um, any, any Jehovah's Witness out there that know, to the Jehovah's Witnesses that know me. To the Jehovah's Witnesses that know me, okay? They know that I was devout, I loved Jehovah, I lived and breathed the truth, and I spoke about it with absolute passion. And anyone that knows me will know I really meant what I was saying, and that's why I'm really having a hard time since coming out. Like, I didn't essentially choose to leave, I was kind of kicked out, like marriage problems and all that jazz, and like having a bit of a breakdown. I... I wronged! And then I got reproved and after my judicial...
She didn't live up to the Watchtower standards. And what did they make her do? They made her leave.
Was it judicial? I don't even remember. But I walked out into the car park and I just laid on the car park floor. I can't cope with my life, I just want to die. Like, I meant, I loved Jehovah, I loved it so much, and that just fucked me up. Anyway, so I got booted out for wrongdoing, and I wasn't sorry though because I hated my husband and he hated me, and he didn't... Well, he didn't want to be with me. Anyway, that's a whole fucking story. But what my point is, is we leave that religion with nothing. When you're so devout and you give everything you can to that charity, and then you essentially leave or get kicked out, you end up with nothing, and that's what leaves people suicidal.
Exactly.
Charity should be free and loving and caring, and that religion is not. So how it still has its charitable status, I do not know. Everyone knows it's for tax evasion reasons. Like, it was started by a man that was a bloody public bookmaker. I don't know all the history, but you know, essentially it started out selling books and religious books and that, and it caught wind and, you know, it had a fad. And that's like where the Jehovah's Witnesses come today. But it destroys lives, and like, so this comment on Facebook, you know, everyone's saying, "Yeah, yeah, babe, you know, we get suicidal thoughts, you're not alone." You know, imagine that, this whole community suffering like post-traumatic stress because of what that religion has inflicted on them. And it's weird because you essentially inflict it on yourself. So you, when you're a Jehovah's Witness, you make sure that you're not friends with people that are not Jehovah's Witnesses. You know, you make sure that your focus is to serve Jehovah, so you don't have a career. You know, all these things, you technically put on yourself. So when you leave, you have nothing. And then the religion will say, "Well, you did it, you know, it's your choice to leave, you chose to leave us." Well, no, not really, because we'd still really like to have our friends and our family! But, you know, that's how the Jehovah's Witnesses view. But what I'm trying to say is, how the fuck is it a charity? That really needs to be sorted out. And this is all the other ex-Jehovah's Witnesses that are suicidal. I feel you're paying... I put a comment on Facebook this morning, saying, "Yeah, like, I regularly think about swinging from the balcony using my dressing gown robe." Like, I've done it a few times. It's not like you go through absolute mad thoughts because you're desperate, you're absolutely desperate. And like, to all the people that I love, like, I loved those brothers and sisters in that congregation. If you love me, please be my friend. I can't believe I'm asking that, it's almost essentially I'm begging. My boyfriend says, "You know, these people don't deserve your friendship and your love." And yeah, he's probably right. Like, I've met a few people now in the world that are really kind, caring, loving, selfless people, and I, you know, I know that if I called up Jenny and was like, "I'm feeling down, like, are you about?", she would come over. There are people that I've met now in the world that are lovely, and I think half of it is that it's considered unconditional love, and in that religion, they will only love you under the condition that you serve Jehovah, Jehovah God. Yeah, so that was my video, I'll probably post that. Yeah. How do we stop making that religion a charity? Because as soon as they're stripped of their money, like essentially, like, if they have to start paying taxes, the religion will go down the pan. Like, they're businessmen, governing body are fucking businessmen, and they know it will be time to jump ship. And also, that governing body member that has a fucking Rolex, like, why are we donating money left, right, and center to help build Kingdom Halls in Africa? You literally can build a few with that Rolex. Fucking donate your Rolex! Stop making the poor people in the congregation give of their money. You know, sending videos out of children, you know? Don't buy an ice cream! Donate your money so we can fucking build Kingdom Halls! Like, it's outrageous! It's so annoying! Like, so my boyfriend's really into like videography and photography and media and all that jazz, and it takes so much money to do what he's doing. You know, and the Jehovah's Witnesses have so much money, so much money. It's a fucking con! Like, Jehovah's Witnesses, like, "I don't want you to be a Jehovah's Witness because I want my friends back! I want my family back!" That's what I'm saying. And I will not go back to that religion because I don't want to believe in the same thing as you. I want my own personality. I, like, literally, I was so wholesaled, so wholesaled, I stopped myself from having immoral thoughts, right? I've been with my boyfriend now four months, and I've essentially been having sex for two years. It has taken two years for me to orgasm because I would not allow myself to have immoral thoughts! Right? This is nuts! That's what that religion does. Not only is it, you know, a money-grabbing evil charity, it stops you from enjoying sex. So that's how I feel about that. Yeah, so yeah, goodbye to YouTube, have a great day on my way into work. Love you lots, bye!
It's pretty bad, isn't it? What else has this guy got to say?
For example, we talked a little bit about facing health concerns. Now imagine as you go along in pioneering, you've got a regular checkup with your doctor, and you receive some really bad news. It's a serious health condition, and you know it's probably not going to be removed...
And it's a result of your religion...
...until we see God's new world. Well, what can we do? How can we show that we trust Jehovah and receive the blessing?
They already trust Jehovah, and they already have received the blessing.
Must we conclude that we have to quickly give up pioneering, and that's it for us in that privilege of service? Well, notice...
And if your health's not allowing you to, or your life commitments aren't allowing you to, yes, you give away the religious activities, particularly if it's voluntary. These people are not employees.
This is what one sister does, very young, Magdalena. She was diagnosed with systemic lupus. But notice she says this on how she keeps preaching despite this chronic illness. "In addition to doing telephone witnessing, I write letters and regularly correspond with a few interested ones she finds. While in the hospital, she puts the Bible and other publications next to her bed. That helps her to strike up many good conversations."
It's relentless, isn't it? It's absolutely relentless. The intrusion into the personal lives of these people, of this cult. Do this, do that, I did this, I did that, aren't I unreal? Look at me, look at me. Look what I did for Jehovah. I'm doing this for Jehovah, I'm getting...
She's even being progressive in her ministry, having conversations with individuals. So a question for you pioneers in the audience. What reasonable adjustments might allow for those facing serious health issues to continue in their pioneer service?
The first thing would be you need to stop your pioneer service and get your life in order.
Reasonable adjustments. Let's get our sister down front here.
They may have to adjust their schedule, perhaps they can't stay out long days, but maybe they can stay out shorter days.
Yes, thank you for that flexible...
Maybe they should stop altogether.
...in the schedule? Let's get our sister there in the back, if you don't mind keeping your hand raised there for the mic handlers.
You might have an illness that keeps you from going out a long time, but you can see if there's not-at-homes or apartment buildings or some part of your territory that has to be worked either by telephone or writing, and you can do that.
Yes.
Oh no, that's just nonsense, isn't it? Complete and utter nonsense.
That's a very nice answer. Let's get our sister that's right back over here.
Many times there's been positive experiences shared in the publications from those who've been hospitalized and able to share the good news with their caretakers and such, so they can likewise potentially take advantage of informal opportunities to witness to others and continue their ministry that way too.
Excellent. All wonderful answers, pioneers. She has letter writing, telephone witnessing, as was mentioned, making adjustments in her schedule...
Oh, nothing about going to rehab or to making sure you follow your doctor's appointments and... Oh no, none of this stuff, that's really going to help. The evil...
Well, perhaps if we can't stay out longer mornings, that's the time that they need to rest, maybe we can adjust our schedule to go out in the late afternoons or evenings...
Maybe you should just put your schedule aside and leave it alone and let somebody else get on with it, some other fool.
...with that individual so that they continue on in their pioneer service. Yes, pioneers, we want to fight the tendency to allow our minds to focus solely on that health condition instead of on the work that Jehovah has given us to do.
Oh no, put Jehovah before your life, put Jehovah before your health. Run yourself into the ground, come on.
Another pioneer sister did this, Sister Kayyun Suk. She lives in Asia. She pioneered with her husband for about 20 years, all with facing numerous challenges. Now, one thing she was confident about was both her and her husband's health. Well, pretty soon Sister Kayyun Suk was diagnosed with advanced lung cancer and told she only had three to six months to live. Now, how did she cope? Did she focus on that health problem?
Can you see what's going on here, viewers? Can you see the drivenness, the satanic drivenness behind this organization? If that woman was given three to six months to live, surely she had to have put this down and... Oh no, oh my God, no.
Notice she states this. "Every night before going to bed, I go to the rooftop of our home and pray out loud." Now, what does she pray about? Does she pray about asking Jehovah to remove the health problem? Does she pray to help her just endure that? Notice she prays about five things that she's grateful for from that day. After those prayers, she feels reassured and moved to express more love for Jehovah. She says this, "I've come to realize that Jehovah sustains us through trials and circumstances, and that there are far more blessings in our lives than there are trials."
Do you know what the sad thing about this is, viewers? Not one mention of the Lord Jesus Christ. Not one mention of the Lord Jesus Christ.
See, a prayer of thanks to our Heavenly Father Jehovah. Now, other pioneers serve as caregivers for their aged parents and an aged loved one. And we know that that can be a formidable challenge. Not only are they physically exhausted, but they're emotionally exhausted, they're mentally exhausted from that. In fact, notice some, when they care for an aged loved one, they state that they feel these emotions. They say it's upsetting to see the painful effects of age on beloved parents. Many caregivers experience sadness, anxiety, frustration, anger, guilt, even resentment. See, what can they do in that situation? Well, while caring for someone, it's important for us to note that we too have limitations. We want to be modest, there's only so much that we can do as a pioneer, there's a limit to our activity.
Right, exactly. And there's a limit to their religious activity as well, and it needs to be put in its proper perspective. But this sort of meeting is making sure that people don't get things in their right perspective, they're making sure that you're still going along with Watchtower duties at some level or another.
So we want to have a question again for your pioneers. How might a caregiver balance his responsibilities in caregiving while serving as a pioneer?
See, so you can't have your priorities uninclusive of Watchtower service. That just doesn't make sense to these people.
Practical things they can do. Let's get our sister that's right there in the middle, if you don't mind keeping your hand raised there for the mics.
Talk about a deceived cult. He's just a cult...
Communication with other members of the family is important. Sometimes you want to be able to be there all the time for the person that you're taking care of, but it's not reasonable. And if you don't tell the members of the family what you're doing on your part, then they won't know and then things won't ever get settled.
Yes, thank you. Communicate...
Well, that's where shunning doesn't work, does it? Shunning just doesn't work.
Very nice suggestion. Our sister down here, Sister McLaughlin.
A pioneer can also communicate with her fellow pioneer sisters and brothers and let them know what her schedule is like. If there are opportunities where she might be able to accept the assistance being offered, it might behoove them to go ahead and to receive that. That's the other pioneer's ways of showing love to that sister or brother and assisting them as they're going through this trial.
Yeah, thank you for that. All very nice comments, friends. So, we can ask for help, that was mentioned. And also, if our aged parents are witnesses, we can speak to the elders in their congregation and ask them for recommendations on what might be done to help care for them. And also speak...
Oh no, don't go to the doctor and find out what the best thing would be, you know, in the full picture of the thing.
With other family members, that was brought out. But note this point, don't just speak with family members that live closest to them. See, perhaps there's other things that even ones who live farther out can do to be of assistance and are willing to do if we just ask them. Now, in some situations, of course, a pioneer may need to temporarily need to discontinue their service in order to give that full-time care that their aged parent or loved one may need, and that's un...
Hip, hip, hooray! I do have to commend the guy for saying that.
Understandable, we have to follow the course of being modest. But if we're not a caregiver, before it comes to that, can we look for practical ways to support those in our congregation who are caregivers? Let's look in on a demonstration of two pioneer sisters while they're on break in the ministry.
Sheila, I'm so happy that we got put in the same car group. How have you been? How's your mom doing?
Oh Jen, thank you so much for asking. You know, my mom's medical situation that she's going through, it's a real big challenge for me, Jen. You know, I mean, I find out I'm having a hard time balancing everything with pioneering and caring for her. And granted, she's doing the best that she can, and as you know, she's not able to make all the meetings. She does tie in, so I'm really grateful for that, but she really misses the friends, Jen, she really does. So I'm just starting to feel overwhelmed with caring for her and balancing my pioneering.
I'm so sorry you're going through so much, Sheila. And you know, every time you come to the meetings, you're just so joyful, you're encouraging. It's hard to imagine, like, you're under so much stress, but I can remember the times whenever my mom was sick, and it took a toll on me, Sheila, taking care of her physically.
This is just acting, isn't it? Just acting, that's all it is. So I'm going to leave this audit here, I'll put all the links in the description below. I do have to say at the end there, he said, "If you do need to leave, the ministry do so." I don't know what detriment that'd have, I think they announce it publicly. If you leave pioneering work, they do embarrass you from the pulpit. But in all honesty, as a professional theologian, theologist, or whatever you want to call me, you do need to put religion second to your personal duty of care and the duty of care of those around you. The Lord Jesus Christ died on the cross so that we could have lives of order, not religious fanaticism. This is Dr. Jason W. Morrison, theologist, New South Wales, Australia. Bye for now.